Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll so that we might establish a quorum?
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Chenier?
Here.
Councilmember Gata?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Here. Good afternoon, everyone. We, of course, have a special meeting this afternoon at 1:00, a closed session at 3:30, and then a regular meeting of the City Council at 5:00 p.m. We begin with a presentation this afternoon recognizing National Planning Month. I turn it over to Councilmember Hanson for the presentation.
Thanks, Mayor. As you know, all great cities have great planning staff and do a lot of work to make sure that the built environment reflects the values of the community and continues to reinforce the positive parts of what we're trying to do. And in Sacramento, that has to do with supporting transit, fighting climate change, creating livable communities that are resilient and resource efficient. And in honor of that, we're here today just to support our planning team who's done an excellent job and are currently underway with the general plan update, as well as a lot of other projects across the city, specific plans, corridor improvements, and specific projects as well, and trying to match our aspirations to these projects. And so I'll turn it over to the planning staff for their short video, and I want to thank them.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but no disrespect intended at all, but I forgot the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, yes, okay.
So if we might ask Mayor Pro Tem Ashby, who was kind enough to remind me, if we would get up and anyone who can stand up, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Okay, ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good.
So Mayor, just to close out that thought, there's a great planning document or book, and it has a quote at the beginning, "To plan is human; to implement divine." And so as much as we plan to do the Pledge of Allegiance, thankful for the divine intervention of Councilmember Ashby to ensure that we did it. And so with that, I'll turn it over to our planners.
Absolutely. Continue, please. We're turning it over to the planning team for a video.
Oh, and Mayor and Council Greg Salem, Acting Planning Director, we have Julia Lev Johnson, who is the president of the California American Planning Association, just to pick up the video and make some introductory remarks.
Hello, thank you so much for having me. My name is Julia Lev Johnson, and I am the president of the California Chapter of the American Planning Association, the largest chapter in the nation. I want to thank you for having me here today to celebrate October as National Community Planning Month. On behalf of Sacramento's professional planners, our community planners, both appointed and volunteers, I want to thank the city and its leadership for recognizing the important impact planning has on the social, economic, and environmental health of the city and the lives of its community members. I personally want to thank the city and its Community Development Department for their continued support and engagement with APA California Sacramento Valdez Section and our award-winning Plan Mentorship Program, which is preparing the next generation of community leaders. I look forward to your continued partnership as we plan to make Sacramento an ever greater place to live, work, and play. And now, in recognition of the other event in October, we have a real treat, a short video about planning in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think the sound is working.
Yeah, where's the music?
Mindy, are you able to hear the sound in the chamber?
No, we can't.
Why don't we, okay, can we take just a moment and see if we can figure out the technical problem, and if not, we'll maybe play the video at the end of the meeting.
Planning is important to Sacramento because Sacramento is both a diverse and very engaged city. Planning is how Sacramento works together to understand our various communities' needs and how best to balance competing objectives. I'm Tom Pace, and I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Sacramento. For me, the Sacramento 2030 Jungle Plan was that project, a major change in the way the city went about planning for the future, because it was a community-driven plan that engaged the whole community and had huge amounts of participation from the public. One of my favorite projects I've worked on as a planner has been comprehensively adjusting our parking requirements for new development. This really helped prioritize people, businesses, homes, public cars. It really picked off, this was in 2012, our city's infill growth, helping encourage development in Central City and the local. I really liked a good 3.0, which was a transportation master plan developed for the central city. Participants were excited to share their thoughts about changing the future around how people, goods, and services should move around downtown and midtown, recognizing that the area was a community and not just a destination for workers and entertainment.
Currently working on a climate action plan and a general plan update that will help address climate change, create more resilient communities, incentivize new housing types, and encourage residents to walk and bike more, as well as creating an environmental justice element that will serve the needs of our underserved communities.
One thing the city does is hold a city planning academy where interested community members can come and learn about all the different aspects of planning and how it works in our city. And that's a great resource for anyone who's interested in planning the future growth of our city and bringing that back to their communities.
Planning is the art of managing change. I enjoy being in a field where I can be a part of helping to chart the course of the future of my community.
Congratulations.
All right, sorry, I was trying to unmute. Thank you, Tom, Greg, and the whole team. I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in, but there's a lot to be done when it comes to good planning. And I know Councilmember Garrett is a former county planning commissioner. Councilmember Warren does a significant amount of planning in his professional life, and we all derive benefits from this work. And so it's really an honor to recognize our staff and the work of our citizens in moving the city forward. That's it.
That's it. No, really a very important part of our city responsibilities, and the general plan is a vision for what we want the city to look like over the next decade. And we have a very creative and dedicated planning and community development staff, and I, congrats on the recognition, and thank you for bringing this forward today. Good. Let us now move forward to the consent calendar, and let's move on to the consent calendar. Are there any questions from members or any items that members would like removed from the consent calendar?
And Mr. Mayor, I have three callers for public comments.
Okay, Madam Clerk, there is some weird feedback going on here with the broadcast. I don't know what it is, if it's just my computer, but it's getting a lot of feedback.
We'll work on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear from the three members of the public who are calling on the consent calendar, please.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Daphne Harris, and I am thankful that the mayor and the council are allowing us to speak. I have three points of information. The attachments are not available on Agenda Item 128, and as a member of the public, I'm asking that all agenda items are discussed individually and not passed as a general consent motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. This is Cornelius Burke with the North State BIA. I'm calling in strong support from item number 10 on your consent calendar. We think it's a smart and prudent move right now, given the COVID-19 crisis. It will help to rebound Central City as it recover from COVID-19. Thank the planning staff for their leadership on this analysis of this item. Obviously, I want to thank Councilmember Hanson for his leadership in the central city, and thank all the members of the City Council and you, Mayor, for your extraordinary leadership during this unprecedented time. Thank you so much, and please vote yes on item number 10.
Thank you, Cornelius. One more person?
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, Richard Wake, City Council, District 5. So I'm calling in this afternoon. I see there's an item on the consent calendar for issues regarding the homeless, and there's also one coming up for the meeting at 5:00. So my question is the following. You know, there's an ad being run by the Campaign for Strong Mayor that says the mayor can declare an emergency in regards to the homeless issue, and then compares what happened in San Diego to what happened here. So I'm just wondering, if votes are going to be rounded up, the past emergency measures on the homeless issue and any other things that could be happening relating to shelters, why is Strong Mayor even needed if six votes are going to be acquired tonight to pass the emergency measure? I'll be happy to yield my time to anybody that cares to answer.
Well, thank you very much for your call, Richard. Of course, the appropriate place to have a discussion about any measure on the ballot, including Measure A, is outside the City Council chamber. So I know I would be happy to speak with you. I'm sure any other member would be outside of an official City Council meeting. It's not appropriate, frankly, to talk about the merits or not of any particular measure.
Well, I hope something is done, whatever is done is soon, because I called in several weeks ago in regards to this, and we've been suffering down here in the Southland Park area for quite some time because of a homeless encampment that's up on the American River and a bunch of trailers that have been parked on Riverside Boulevard for quite some time now. And you know, I'm all for helping out the homeless people. As you all well know, I donate a lot of time and effort to help with this issue, yet there's an increase in crime in our neighborhood, vandalizing, breaking windows, all sorts of stuff.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, it's just kind of hypocritical to pass all this stuff now and do it now when we've been waiting three years, and you guys are out.
Thank you for your comments.
More power for the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Mayor, I'd like to move the consent calendar.
Is there a second? I know Pro Tem Ashby, you have a comment.
Sure, Mayor, I'm happy to second. I have a comment. I don't need to pull it, but item seven is the contract for the janitorial services for City Hall, and I just, you know, this was long discussed, took us a couple of years, and I wanted to thank city staff for working with me and being persistent and seeing it through. This is now just an item on our consent calendar easily. I'm sure we'll receive the support tonight, but it means a lot to the janitors in City Hall because it now means that they don't have to choose between a dollar or $2 an hour of wages and health care. We changed the contract so that the janitors will have health care without being penalized in their hourly wages. And it was a bit of a battle, but I am very grateful to city staff for hearing us out and seeing it through. And with that, I'm happy to second the motion made by Councilmember Hanson, and go ahead and vote.
Very much. Let's call the roll on the consent calendar, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson?
Hi.
Councilmember Chenier?
Hi.
Councilmember Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Councilmember Carr?
Hi.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Hi. Did Councilmember Jennings get to?
Councilmember Jennings says yes.
Okay, good. Didn't want to leave you out. Very good. The consent calendar passes unanimously. We do have two items on the discussion calendar. One is item 29, and why don't we begin with that, which is two audits that our city auditor performed? Let me turn it over to the city auditor, please. No, you're not on mute, so. There's a lot of like, it's real windy or something, but. I'm not, let's see if.
We could hear you a little bit. You may try adjusting your volume, Jorge. This is Maria.
Any better?
Yes, I can hear you well. Go ahead, why don't you give it a try? No, not hearing you very well. Can anybody?
Could be the headphones. Jorge, try without the headphones, maybe.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Okay, one more thing to do to get the PowerPoint.
You might just need to speak up.
Mayor, I also want to point out that the council does have to take a vote to suspend having this go directly to budget and audit.
Madam City Attorney, can we do that after the presentation?
I believe you have to do it now.
Okay, well then, let's do that, and that'll give Jorge a little bit more time.
That's what I figured.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Good, this is to suspend the rule so that this can come directly to the City Council. Should be non-controversial. Let's call the roll on the motion, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson?
Hi.
Councilmember Chenier?
Hi.
Councilmember Gata?
Hi.
Hey, Rick.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, okay, the rule is suspended. Let's proceed now with the auditor's report, please.
All right, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sorry about that.
Please speak up, Jorge.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. Jorge Soguera, your city auditor, more loud. With me today is Lynn Bishaw, Farishta Arari, and Nathan Lugo, who were together working on this project. The recommendation that is before you is that you pass a motion by two-thirds vote, which we just did, suspending the council rules and procedures, and then number two, approving the city auditor's on-track compliance audit of the Roberts Family Development Center and Downtown Streets Team Incorporated. Am I coming through okay?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, the objective of the audit was to assess compliance with city contracts for two separate entities, the Roberts Family Development Center and Downtown Streets Team. Roberts Family Development Center is a nonprofit entity that delivers programming to hundreds of low-income, at-risk youth, organizes pop-up events, and operates Freedom Schools in the city of Sacramento. RFDC received approximately $1.2 million in grant funding from the city of Sacramento between 2016 and December of 2019. Why did we audit RFDC? In December of 2019, the city manager's office became aware that RFDC settled a lawsuit in August of 2019 with the state of California Department of Housing and Community Development in which the state alleged RFDC had mismanaged and diverted funds in relation to one of their contracts. The settlement agreement indicates that while neither the state nor RFDC admitted liability, RFDC agreed to repay the state $400,000 in damages. We had two findings related to the work with RFDC. The first finding is that RFDC's financial record-keeping system is disorganized and contains significant material weaknesses. Covered in this finding is the issue that revenue and expenses are not adequately tracked to ensure they are used for their intended purposes. It is questionable how RFDC will fund debt payments to the state that resulted from settlement agreements. $21,000 in loans were made to RFDC directors and officers in violation of the California Corporations Code, and financial performance indicators suggest RFDC may be struggling to meet financial obligations. We had seven recommendations relating to finding one, as noted on this page. They include developing processes to ensure revenues and expenses are coded through the correct accounts, documenting the specific source of funds for which the state debt will be paid, developing processes and procedures to continue to monitor key financial performance The second finding is that RFDC should develop a robust system of internal controls to safeguard charitable assets, prevent loss, and ensure the reliability of financial records. Included in this finding are issues related to a lack of financial reporting, fundraising, and volunteering policies, the RFDC Board of Directors not exercising adequate fiscal operational oversight, stronger controls being needed over employee debit card use, and RFDC was not in good standing with the California Attorney General's Registry of Charitable Trust during part of the audit. They are currently in good standing. In relationship to finding two, we had six recommendations in this finding. They include establishing a finance committee requiring all employees to complete RFDC's monthly debit forms and submit receipts, and discontinuing the use of employee debit We should also note that in June of 2020, RFDC entered into an agreement with the Sierra Health Foundation whereby the Sierra Health Foundation will provide certain advisory and consulting services to RFDC, as noted on this slide. Included in that agreement are, the contract states that an independent assessment of RFDC's operational and organizational needs will be conducted, also a review of RFDC's governance structure and policies and procedures. There are many other areas where the Sierra Health Foundation will be providing assistance, and those are detailed in the contract. The report's second chapter focuses on Downtown Streets Team, which engages and organizes team members who provide cleanup and beautification services to various cities. Why did we audit Downtown Streets Team? We audited Downtown Streets Team at the request of the city manager to look into allegations that former employees had been subjected to discrimination and a toxic workplace culture, and to evaluate their compliance with the city's contract. We had two findings regarding the Downtown Streets Team. Our first finding is that the Downtown Streets Team's human resource policies and internal complaint procedures should be updated to reflect best practices and communicated to all employees annually. Included in this finding is that 40% of employees sampled have not formally acknowledged Downtown Streets Team human resources policies in a year. In the first finding, we made four recommendations, which included developing a process to ensure all employees, including management, acknowledge the employee handbook annually. The second finding is that gift cards meant for homeless persons were signed for by Downtown Streets Team staff. We had one recommendation related to this finding, which was to develop a process to ensure gift card receipts are acknowledged by volunteers and not Downtown Streets Team So what about the city's grant management practices? We found the city could improve its grant management practices by adopting best practices, as noted in the report. Specifically, we found a centralized process for receiving grant applications and aggregating funding data could improve the city's grant management practices, lack of an evaluation process to determine if grantees have sufficient technical capacity to demonstrate performance, and finding three is insufficient monitoring of financial reporting and program results compromises the city's ability to ensure contract terms are met and objectives are In regards to recommendations to city management, we made four recommendations to address the three findings in the third chapter, which included establishing a citywide grants management policies based on industry best practices that include guidance on due diligence, contract compliance, financial reporting, and program evaluation. That concludes my presentation. I believe there are representatives from the Roberts Family Development Center and the Downtown Streets Team if there are any questions regarding the content of the report.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, auditor. So I know we've got public testimony, but is it appropriate now, I think, to have the subjects of both the audits present, and then if there are other members of the public who want to testify, that's, of course, appropriate? And then we'll turn it over to the council for questions and comments. So why don't we begin with the representatives of the Roberts Family Development Center to provide... So why don't we begin with the representatives of the Roberts Family Development Center to provide a response to the audit? Who is, is that, is that Daryl or Tina or a representative of the, another representative of the, of the center?
It would be Daryl and Tina Roberts, Mayor.
Okay, we don't have you on video. We'd love to see you if we could, but.
Yes, sir. Not sure what the problem is. Host has asked you to start your video, okay? There you go.
Now we see you, okay. Welcome, Daryl.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, City Manager Chan, members of the City Council. It's Daryl and Tina Roberts, co-founders of Roberts Family Development Center, and the chief officers of the center. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to address the city auditor's report on our fiscal reporting process. I thank the city auditor and the staff for working with us through the last nine months. And as we have stated in the report, we recognize our failure to address the fiscal house of our organization, and we are addressing it with the energy, optimism, and vigor that we have addressed the programmatic side of our center. In addition to signing an MOU partnership with Sierra Health Foundation early this summer to help us account for future city financial support, we have hired Colleen Craig, a 20-year veteran and nonprofit accounting as our fiscal director, to assure we are in compliance with all standards and procedures required by the IRS Attorney General Charitable Trust in the city and county of Sacramento. It should be noted that Ms. Craig comes to us through our Sierra Health partnership, but it is our plan to keep her on as a part of the Roberts Family for a very long time. Tina?
Good afternoon. In addition to our partnership with Sierra Health, in addition, our partnership with Sierra Health will help strengthen our Board of Directors' governing structure. The work has also started with board governance training provided by Gilbert and Associates, and the active recruitment of new committed board members to join our existing board. We have also elected a new board chair, Lonnie Bray, who has committed to leading us in a strong, new direction, one that will bring new and much-needed unrestricted financial support to our organization. It is no secret, like many nonprofits, we are challenged to bring in non-programmed support, but our new revitalized board, which will be expanding, has expressed a willingness to do just that.
City Council, when we started RFDC 20 years ago, we had no idea the positive impact it would have on the lives of children and families we served. From preschool support to the, to the thousands of grade schoolers tutoring and assisting high schoolers being mentored, to the hundreds of college students we have seen graduate as part of the Roberts Family, we are proud of our work but recognize that we are no longer the small nonprofit with a purpose of helping families. But now we are an organization employing nearly 100 staff members annually, serving more than 600 youth and their families yearly, with an annual budget in excess of $2.5 million each year, with the desire to make systematic change. COVID has given us the opportunity to serve our neighbors and neighborhoods in ways we never thought possible. Feeding families, providing PPE, and being ready to provide emergency support in the toughest moments has become part of our daily work.
By focusing on our services to the community, we have become a trusted community partner. By focusing on our fiscal structure, we will become that institution which can stand the test of time. Our hope is to leave a legacy others can follow. We hope to return periodically to give away public update on what's happening with Roberts Family Development Center and to reassure you and to gain the trust of those that we have lost on the council and our city who that have had for us in meeting our expectations.
Allow me to introduce our partner in this new venture, Mr. Richard Dana, Senior Program Officer of Sierra Health, who will speak more to the relationship and partnership we now have established. And that'll be followed by our board chair, Lonnie Bray, who will offer a few comments himself. Mr. Dana?
Thank you, Daryl. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Richard Dana, Director of Community and Economic Development for the Sierra Health Foundation. You know, I want to start by actually just thanking Jorge and his team for the work that they did. In particular, when I met with him, his push was around the value of the work that is being done on the ground level and how we maintain that. I think we found some opportunities to not just ensure that there's continuation long-term, but that they're strengthening at the same time. So appreciation to his team for that. Mr. Roberts mentioned the agreement between Sierra Health Foundation and Roberts Family Development Center. That agreement calls for Sierra Health Foundation to manage RFDC's financial operations to ensure compliance with the industry-accepted accounting practices, grant reporting, the implementation of financial management tools and systems. And Ms. Roberts mentioned as well that we're doing some additional board training and some fiscal oversight with the board to ensure that reporting and oversight can be maintained long-term. I also want to just quickly note that in Jorge's presentation, he noted the cost of Sierra Health Foundation taking the fiscal management on. I just want to point out that the $120,000 is being spent on a fiscal manager, a person who is hired by Sierra Health Foundation to oversee the Roberts Family Development Center's operations. It's a really standard cost in today's world, especially in nonprofit world, where it's really important that the financial capacity of an organization be strengthened. Many nonprofits actually do that through outside entities. I know from my experience with Mutual Assistance Network, as the executive director for 20 years, we use an outside entity to oversee our accounting. That allows for non-biased oversight and a third-party eye, which really is important in today's world. So that cost of 120 is very standard, and if it wasn't going to us, it would be part of his, the RFDC's built-in system of management internally. Just wanted to note that, really proud of the work that's being done in strengthening together through the partnership between the city, RFDC, and Sierra Health Foundation. Thank you. Mr. Roberts, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you, Richard. Mr. Bray, would you like to make a couple of comments as board chair?
Yes, I would. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to collectively go over the response to the audit report. As the new, as the new board chair, I take the responsibility responding to the findings seriously. This response is critical to the future success of RFDC, RFDC, excuse me. I am committed to ensure RFDC adopts the best practices to address all of the audit filings. A brief update, thus far, we have partnered with the Sierra Health Foundation and instituted board governance training. We had two sessions thus far on August 12th and August 20th. The focus for those initiatives were board governance and fundraising. In reference to board governance, we discussed the board's roles and responsibilities. We talked about establishing a constructive partnership between the board and the executive directors. We instituted a new board structure meeting format to ensure that we have more formalized notes and documentation of what our progress in the meetings have been. We also talked about strengthening the board membership while enhancing the talent pool to represent the diverse competencies that we need, i.e. law, finance, retail, fundraising, nonprofit, et cetera. We also made a commitment to increase the board members to a minimum of 10 members, not including the executive directors. In reference to fundraising, we already talked about getting the fundraising aligned with the disciplines along with the RFDC priorities. In reference to making sure that we have people on the board that understand finance, understand fundraising, understand how the nonprofit system works to assist us with our financial endeavors. Also, the board members, we are also looking at improving our own personal ability through, to secure non-restricted funds through what we call a give or get commitment. The amount of that give or get commitment will be put upon the board for approval. These monies that we secure with the give or get program will utilize to assist with the one-time ONS settlement payment responsibly of $180,000. Conjugatively, throughout the year, we will continue to conduct various fundraisers, activities to generate unrestricted funding, i.e. golf tournaments, virtual dinners, et cetera, to make sure that we can continue to offset the ONS settlement responsibility. So in closing, thank you for the opportunity to speak about how our board will address the audit findings, and I look forward to communicating as to how our progress goes thus far. Thank you.
And, and just so you know, Mayor, the Colleen Craig, who is our new fiscal director, she's on the line in case there are any other questions that are requested of us.
Thank, thank you very much. I think we now want to hear from the representative of Safe Streets. They were also part of the audit presentation. And then we will hear from the public, and then again, we'll go back, right back to the city council. I see councilmembers Shanir, Hanson, and Warren, who have their hands up, and I'm sure other members, I know I'll want to make some comments. So let's hear from whoever is here representing Safe Streets, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Rachel Davidson with Downtown Streets Team. I am the Sacramento area director and pleased for the opportunity to respond to the audit findings with all of you. I wanted to share a little bit about the history of how this audit came to be. Almost three years ago, a small group of former employees filed a complaint, an HR complaint. At that point, our Board of Directors hired an independent firm to conduct what became a year-and-a-half-long investigation. Part of the agreement of, of the outcome of this was that whatever the outcome was, no additional judicial action would be taken by the former employees. After a year-and-a-half-long independent investigation, it was found that the allegations were unsubstantiated, and it was dropped. Once that happened, this group of former employees decided to go about having an article or a series of articles released, and that's how we've come to this point here. All of the allegations, we've taken very seriously, as well as the findings. So first, I want to address the findings that were outlined in the audit presentation. In regards to our HR program and resources, we have hired an HR director who now reports directly to our board. In addition to that, the employee handbook manual was completely redone after the audit from the city of Sacramento and was redistributed to staff. So every staff is signed within the last three weeks a new employee handbook, which outlines their HR procedures and policies, and that will be done every year moving forward. In regards to the gift cards and staff signing out, that was something that came to light because of this audit, and I'm grateful for it. There was a staff person who encountered consistent technical difficulties at our Wednesday meeting. And so once a team member was handed their stipend, if our iPad was not working and did not capture the signature, that signature was then from a staff person later on that day when we had consistent connection to Wi-Fi. That happened for three months, and once it was brought to my attention, it was immediately stopped. We do have a firm policy that team members must sign when they receive their gift cards. We do have hard copy paper documentation in the chance that we ever do again encounter technical difficulties. We have very inconsistent access to Wi-Fi at our meeting locations, so it does make it quite difficult for us from time to time. The only other time that happens is if a team member is in a situation where, for some reason, they are unable to sign, and we receive written consent from them to sign on their behalf as they receive their gift cards. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the council has. We really look forward to being able to put this behind us, to move forward and continue to do the good work that we're proud to do in the city of Sacramento, as well as in all of our 15 communities. And any other findings and recommendations that the city has in the future, we are more than happy to implement immediately.
Okay, thank you very much, Rachel. All right, let us now move to the public testimony, other than the representatives of the two organizations. How many people do we have on the line, Madam Clerk?
I have one caller on the line.
Okay, let's take that caller, please.
Thank you. May I have my caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, hello, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the city council. This is Jim Teddy. I'm the executive director of Youth Forward. And I'm here to speak in support of the Roberts Family Development Center. For over 15 years, I personally witnessed the outstanding work of RFDC with children, youth, and families. Thousands of children and young people have benefited from their support in the areas of mentoring, job training, and employment skills, after-school support, parent education, and other service areas. I think it's also important to note that RFDC works in our neighborhoods that have been most impacted by underinvestment, overcriminalization, and systemic racism. Each year, they build upon their legacy as young people graduate from their programs and go on to college and career and to continue to serve others. In my view, it's impossible to quantify the long-term positive impact of Robert Chandler Development Center. It is a critical asset here in our community, and as you've seen in the recent report, they have taken important steps forward to strengthen their internal infrastructure and to comply with the concerns expressed in the audit report. And then finally, I'd like to remark on the city's, the recommendations the city brought forward to itself around developing an internal grant-making system. I think it's important for the city to not only look at compliance with the nonprofit sector, but also find ways to support capacity building in our sector. Nonprofits are a critical element here, particularly if the city seeks to do more in the area of racial equity. For the last few years, I've been working with three state agencies to help them develop grant-making programs. These are agencies that are making grants that are funded by state cannabis tax revenues. We sought feedback from nonprofits around the state and developed recommendations on how these state agencies can best work with.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, my final comment is that if the city goes to develop its grant-making system, I would strongly encourage city staff to work in dialogue with nonprofits and develop something that works both for the city and for the nonprofit.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more callers.
Okay, let's turn it over to the city council. I've got councilmember Shanir, Hanson, Warren, and Vice Mayor Harris. So Councilman Shanir.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Jorge and his staff for undertaking this. I think this is really a critical piece of, pieces of information that we've gotten. Also, at the outset, I want to thank Sierra Health for kind of stepping in and supporting Daryl and Tina and the very important work that they do. You know, we, we have a lot of nonprofits. So we have two organizations here that are really critical to the future of the city, that do fabulous work in the neighborhoods, and that I know are important to us as we think about the future of Sacramento. What this has pointed out, though, which I don't think is unique, is the lack of capacity. I'm going to echo a few things that Jim Teddy said, but the lack of capacity among nonprofits, particularly nonprofits that started very small and have grown quickly. Generally, they're underfunded, and generally, they're trying to make it through the day. So when you have reporting requirements and trying to create infrastructure, I think that's often difficult for them to do because of a lack of resources. And I think we have two pretty good examples of what can happen when you have good people doing good work, but not having the capacity and the resources to kind of round that out 100%, to be able to take care of all of the bits and pieces that one has to do when you run an organization. I've known the Roberts for, since their days at Keith B. Kenny Elementary School and the Head Start program there, and I've been familiar with Downtown Streets now for a couple of years through other work that I do as well. And they both do sterling work. There's no question about it. So I'm hoping that, you know, as we have stepped up our capacity as a city to provide technical assistance to small businesses, we should be doing the same thing for nonprofits. As we think about the future, as we think about the work that we want to do around inclusive economic development, we're going to need these nonprofits as partners. I've talked about this before in statements, but they are closer to the ground. They understand the neighborhoods in which they work, and I think we need to really understand and rely. And I think we need to really understand and rely on them to help us get where we want to go as a community and as a city. So my hope is twofold. One is, and I believe, City Attorney, we still need a motion to accept the compliance audits. Is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember.
Okay, so I want to do two things. I want to move that we accept the audits by the city auditor. I think they were done really well and have highlighted something that we need to get at. I also want to provide direction to the city manager to look at the city's recommendations, but also to think about how we can parallel what we're doing for small businesses or nonprofits in capacity building and come back to the council with an outline of what we can be doing, whether it's this year or within next year's budget. So that's my motion and direction.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Shanir. Councilmember Warren was next, then Harris, then Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll second Jay's motion. You know, I think Jay touched on some very valid points that, you know, when you go from a small enterprise to a much larger enterprise, you're faced with challenges that sometimes you're unprepared for. And I think all of us recognize the good work that Daryl and Tina are doing throughout the city of Sacramento and have been doing it for a long time. So it takes special people to stay committed to doing the kinds of things that they've been doing. And so, and I know that Sierra Health Foundation will be an added security blanket, if you will, to really help them stabilize their enterprise. I also know that this COVID situation and the economic, not collapse, but the economic challenges that it has brought about is really traumatic across the board. And so a lot of people are feeling it. And I know that Roberts Family Development Center has a project, a very significant project, under construction. And so hopefully, as we get through this, we can find our way clear to help support them. There are long ways along in the process, but they do need some additional support. And I'd be supportive of helping them get what they need to finish their project. So keep up the good work, Daryl and Tina, and thank you for what you're doing in the city and in District Two. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jorge, for your team's hard work. I don't think anybody looks forward to an audit. It's sort of like anticipating a colonoscopy organizationally. And, you know, without the forgetful drug they give you so you don't remember what happened. I think that having served on a lot of nonprofit boards and engaged with a lot of nonprofits, a lot of them are thinly resourced when it comes to administrative capacity because donors and granters, they don't want to fund overhead or back a house operations. They just want to fund service delivery. And what we're seeing here is something that I would expect if we audited in the same way every nonprofit that we support, we would find similar deficiencies probably across the board in some process or procedure. That doesn't mean that the organizations can't do better now that they know better, to paraphrase Maya Angelou. And I was very proud to see the forthright response that both agencies had. In the midst of this COVID pandemic, we've come to rely on nonprofits even more to be extra responsive, to go above and beyond, to stretch even further. These two organizations in particular serve communities that are some of the most disadvantaged, left behind, forgotten, in need, fallen through the cracks of government, and need the helping hand of a friendly face and a loving hug to find their way back to us. And, you know, I think in the end, when you hear about Mr. Roberts or Ms. Roberts, as we call them, Daryl and Tina, and their work in their community, the smiles on the kids, the results with the parents, speak volumes about, you know, their legacy and how much they really do care about the communities they serve. And whether it's been in my district, which they've done tremendous work through the Roberts Family Development Center, particularly with our public housing sites at Marina Vista and Alder Grove through College Bound Babies or Freedom Schools or the Black Child Legacy Program. There has really been a tremendous value to their on-the-ground presence. And I'll note, as they've been cut back in that particular community, we've seen the rise of violence and trauma without the corollary opportunity to get with those families and to help to repair some of that damage and get people back to where they need to be. For Downtown Streets team, you know, it is a truly transformational program. Earlier this year, right before the pandemic hit, the Broadway team, which had just been merged with some folks who had been working downtown, we, I took everyone to breakfast at Pancake Circus. And we had brown sugar and the whole crew. And I don't need to bore you with photos, but if you saw the feelings of dignity and respect that people get from a program that empowers them, especially when you're homeless and you don't have resources and, you know, everybody thinks that you're going to just fail, so they've given up on you. Rachel and her team just have not given up. They did a celebration earlier this year for their participants. They did a DJ at the Sacramento Food Bank. And Rachel and her team, I got to stop by, dancing with the participants. You know, it's not uncommon for people to get together to have a celebration. But how many of you have taken the time to dance with somebody who's homeless? How many of you have taken the time to go listen to their stories? I actually, I didn't have to twist his arm, he offered to do it, but Howard Chan, our city manager, went to see one of their weekly team meetings. And I know that the formalities of signing for this and that are really important. I don't want to diminish that. But these programs, in the amount of reliance that we have on them for great expectations to meet needs, for the responsibilities that we foisted upon them, a lot of times, they just don't get the resources that the people in need truly deserve. And so I know that, while this wasn't fun, I'm glad that it's over. I'm glad that we've been able to provide value to the board, staff, and leadership at both organizations. And I do think that's the value of an audit. Although, again, it's probably one of the least desirable things that you want to do, especially an audit in public. I don't think anybody gets their colonoscopies in public. But I do think this is really important. I want to support the motion. But I'd like to add a little direction, Jay and Alan, which is we funded through Measure U last year monies to help the Roberts Family Development Center finish out their building project. I'd like to add direction to have the city manager agendize that for our November 10th meeting to provide those monies through Sierra Health Foundation to complete the building project so the Roberts Family Development Center can get back up on their feet, continue to provide the great services. And I know through this pandemic, it's not only PPP and PPE, it's also food. It's also a variety of other things that no government agency can do very well or as efficiently. And so I hope that, Jay, you can take that as additional direction. And Alan, you'll accept that as the second.
So the direction is to agendize the item?
Yes, agendize the item for the council to award the grants that's been held back due to the audit. And we can vote on that at that meeting.
Okay, I just want to give the city manager, along with the mayor, the flexibility on timing on that. But I'm happy to ask them to agendize it as soon as possible.
Mr. City Manager, is there a date that you would prefer?
How about we come back to this after the council comments on a date? In case there are any other things that needed to be added to this motion.
Okay, well, I would just ask before the Thanksgiving holiday that we have this back. We've got two meetings, the 10th and the 17th, and one of those as direction to the city manager.
Okay.
I'm going to make a comment on your suggestion when it comes to the timing and how we do this, but thank you. Councilman Shanir's.
So Jay, you're not, at this point, you'd just rather wait on the friendly amendment?
Yeah, I'm happy to provide the direction to bring it back to council. I'd like to see what the city manager and the mayor have as far as timing. That's all.
Okay, and Alan, are you willing to support that as the second?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, thank you, guys.
Okay, we've got Vice Mayor Harris, then Mayor Protem Ashby. I see hands up and Councilmember Geta. Okay, let's go. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Daryl and Tina, a lot has been said about what you provide to the community, and I agree with that. I've gone to see your programs and really appreciated the work that you do in the community and specifically the employees that you've hired, who are very dedicated to uplifting youth in underserved communities. There's no disputing that. You know, that's why I'm deeply disappointed at this audit, that you find yourself in such a pickle. You know, it's not a lightweight thing that the state came down on you and came down pretty hard and that you entered into a very substantial settlement. This audit was exhaustive and turned up many factors in the lack of transparency in your reporting and your receipts that leave open to question a lot about your financial future. I'd like to say that I really hope that you overcome these obstacles and appreciate that you're going to work with Sierra Health. But there's two outstanding issues here that are very important to look at. One is that our auditor was not able to ascertain how or where from you pay your payments to the state nor how you will get the $10,000 monthly to pay Sierra Health. So there are a lot of issues here. You know, how you got yourself into this financial bind is, you know, I suppose a question, but it's immaterial. What matters is moving forward. And like I said, I really hope, given the fact that you have done and can do and perhaps will do an awful lot more for the community, that you put your fiscal house in order. But it's very important, I think, for this council to understand the gravity of the situation here. I mean, this is pretty serious stuff we're looking at. And I would be happy to vote for funding for you in the future once we understand how you're paying your state debt and how you are able to pay Sierra Health to work out these issues. But there are still a lot of questions in play here. You know, ultimately, I don't have to go on too long about this, but, you know, I'm a small businessman and as a businessperson, if my books weren't auditable and acceptable, I would be out of business. The CSLB would revoke my contractor's license. You know, there are immediate repercussions to doing business poorly when you are in private business. And the same is true of nonprofits. So I've heard my colleagues talk about how you built up from a very small beginning to, you know, a substantial organization. And yeah, I get it that books can kind of, you know, not be at the forefront. But the fact of the matter is, for any economic enterprise, it has to be at the forefront. You have to be able to be transparent, to show where the money comes from, where the money goes to. It's just part of being a responsible organization. So, you know, I personally do not think it's appropriate for the city to fund you any further until such a time as you can get a clean bill of health from our city auditor because he and his team are very thorough. I found them to be very fair, but mostly they're just spot on in terms of discovering the facts and reporting the facts. I don't know, Mr. City Manager, if you agree with me on that score, but, you know, we have discussed this issue. And if I was in business and I had questionable books, I wouldn't be looking for funding until I could show the people funding me that I can account for every penny. Mr. Manager?
So, Mr. Mayor, may I?
You may. You might want to wait till the end of the council comments, but it's up to you, Mr. City Manager, if you want to respond.
No, no, I'll defer to the council. I'll defer to the council.
Well, that's fine. So I've said my piece. You know, I really hope that you can find the monies, work with Sierra Health, that you can get the financial expertise on board that you need, that your board will be more proactive, and they will basically hold your feet to the fire. You know, you need help to work on the finances so you can do the work that you do and do very well. And I, again, encourage you and hope that you can pull, you know, out of this particular predicament and get back to the work of supporting the community that you've done for many years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Carr, you were next, then Councilmember Geta, then Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very much interested in hearing the answers to the questions posed by Vice Mayor. And I think those are critical things. But two things jump out at me about the audit. One, and I think Jay summarized them succinctly. We probably need to think about how we can technically support the nonprofits that we give grants to. And there are organizations out there, I'm sure some of the chambers that already exist can do that. But the second thing that really jumps out, and Jay mentioned this, but I want to reiterate it, is that we don't have the capacity ourselves to monitor the grants that we are giving these nonprofits. We don't have the capacity to see if the grants really do deliver the results that we are hoping for in the contracts. And we don't have the capacity to see if the nonprofits are double dipping and getting us to pay for a service and getting another agency to pay for that same service. So I'd be interested in that. Jay, I think you included this in your motion, that the city manager come back to us with his take on the recommendations and what he plans to do about them. Was that included?
Yeah, yeah, I think we have a lot of work to do in grants management. It's not something the city has done historically very well. But we've learned a lot of lessons over the last couple of years as we've increased our participation and work with nonprofits. But I think we have a ways to go. So I'd like the city manager to look at this pretty comprehensively. Look at the recommendations from the auditor and also look at the capacity building, both in the nonprofits and in the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm learning how to do the waved hands on Zoom here, so now I see the order in a different way. I did before, and I guess it was Councilmember Jennings who was next, then Geta, then Ashby, and then Steinberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank Jorge and his staff on the audit and the work that they've done, invaluable work, and I appreciate it very much. I know the motion on the floor has already been seconded, but I would like to third that motion if it's possible, just to show my support for it, and I guess I will when I vote. But the thing I think I want to say most about the Roberts Family Development Center, and I want to speak to Daryl and to Tina, they are good people who do good quality work. And as a person who has run a nonprofit since 1992, and you can do the math, building up to capacity in order to meet the needs that you have to run that business, while you continue to do good work in the neighborhood and affecting each of the people, becomes a difficult formula to put together. It's a very difficult formula to have a development director, to have a chief financial officer, to have all the components that are necessary to run a good quality organization. And oh, by the way, nobody's giving you any money in order to help pay for those positions. And so unless you have an incredible fundraiser that raises thousands of dollars or you have a philanthropist who just gives you money, sometimes you have to double up and the person who's running your childcare center is the same person who maybe is doing another job as well. So I would ask every city council member who's sitting on the city council, how valuable are the nonprofits that are in your district? Are they to you? And what kind of work are they doing that's making a difference in your district and in your community? I would ask you to ask every individual who goes to those nonprofits, how valuable are the nonprofits in the community who are doing the work that nobody else is doing that needs to be done? Every individual will tell you the one reason they go to the nonprofits is because they're there every single day fighting the fight to help make things come together and that they trust the people who are in the nonprofits. They may not trust government, but they trust the people who are out there doing the work in those nonprofits. trust the people who are out there doing the work in those nonprofits. And they trust Roberts Family Development Center. They trust Darryl, and they trust Tina, and they trust their entire staff. If you go and talk to the employees at Roberts Family Development Center, you have to ask how many of them, this was their first job that they got and the opportunity to work and to be able to walk from their home to their job so that they didn't have to worry about transportation. And how many people have they employed through the years? You would see those numbers to be countless and just incredible. They provide incredible resources, not only to North Sacramento, but the entire city of Sacramento. Their nonprofit rating is 4.4. Obviously, they are doing something right. They run a Freedom School. They run the Black Child Legacy. They run the Teen Scene. They run after-school programs. They run Pacers Moving Forward, and they do a Parent Impairment Program. I can't even name everything that they do. I'm just telling you what I know. And so they impact and affect thousands of people every single day. And so now that they understand what they have to do, there is no question in my mind that they will meet the challenge. They've already brought in the Sierra Health Foundation. They've already addressed the board training that needs to be done. I know they're going to start looking for ways to bring in the positions that they don't have in order to be able to run the organization the way it should be run and try to find out ways to raise money in order to pay for all of that. So, you know, I'm sure they have all the questions and all the answers that we have right now. I'm sure they do. But I just want them to know from me, I have full confidence in Darryl Roberts, Tina Roberts, and the Roberts Family Development Center. And what you can't figure out by yourself, we will put a team around you to give you the assistance that you need to continue the work that you're doing. So I don't condone what's happened, but I do know that you're a valuable resource that we will not let, we will not lose in the city of Sacramento. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Gedda?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jennings could not have said it more eloquent. Thank you, Tina, and thank you, Darryl, and the Roberts Family Development Center for the work that you've done over the years. Thank you, Jorge and the staff, for a thorough audit and also the guidance and recommendations moving forward. Again, you know, I think the key thing here, I'd like to go back to, is, you know, for many of us who either served on nonprofit boards, continue to support them, raise money for them, and worked with them, the folks who've created these nonprofits or started on them, they did it not to build a business, but they did it to solve an issue that was lacking, that they were filling a gap that had not been met. And many of our boards, board members who are engaged in those also join for those issues and those social causes. The, you know, the boards that have gone through the tough times, they've kind of developed and have resolved some of these issues and learned those experiences. They also happen to be the ones that have more, you know, wealthier donors. And so I think there's an equity question also sometimes about, you know, where we put our resources for nonprofits. I want to take a step back and also remind that when the city has gone out to do outreach for a number of our efforts, whether it's been our plan, general plan, whether it's been infrastructure projects, whether it's been information about how we're going to budget our city, the first thing that our city staff do is they reach out to those nonprofits, whether it's our neighborhood associations, whether it's our, the American Job Centers who are nonprofits, whether it's those who are civic or religious organizations, the first people we go to is those for support and help. And if there's anything that we continue to talk about is how do we do more community engagement and capacity building? Well, if we don't support the capacity building of those nonprofits, I think we're only doing us a disservice as well. So, I mean, I want to support the motion. I'm going to support the motion, and I also agree with the need to, as we move forward, I'd like the city, and Mr. City Manager, I'd like the city to start looking at as part of our neighborhood services, how do we expand on also the education and training for our nonprofits? And it's not the first time we've, you know, some of our nonprofits have forgotten to do the paperwork, particularly those at the very neighborhood level who we rely on. And I think ensuring that we give some training, whether it's been through our chambers or through other nonprofits who are experts and have gone through this, you know, peer-to-peer mentorship, I think is a key thing, but we do need to support that effort. Again, I want to just thank again all the work that's been done on this. It only highlights that there's more capacity building to do. And if I think about the last few months, it's been all the food distribution sites. It's been the flu vaccination clinics that we're setting up. It's been the testing sites for COVID-19. And it's been also the employment centers where we're trying to get information about how to recover during this COVID-19 have been at locations for nonprofits. So I want to make sure that we look at increasing the capacity, because it's, I think, as one of my colleagues mentioned, all of them are facing that same challenge and figuring out how we help in that strengthening of that framework is important. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, thank you all of those who've put this work together on how we better look at our contract procurement.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. So first, Jay, or is Jay still up there somewhere?
I'm here.
Jay, there was just a lot of bouncing around. Can you tell me what your motion is again?
So the motion is twofold. One is to accept the audits, the compliance audits from the city auditor, which we need to do, and then provide direction to the city manager to take a look at, number one, the recommendations that have come from the city auditor and respond to those, but also to look at the other side of that coin and the capacity building needs of nonprofits and of the city, and to develop a plan to get after that, possibly this year, but for sure, at least in next year's budget. My reasoning, you know, we've worked a lot with small businesses to provide technical assistance. I think we should be doing the same thing for nonprofits because of their importance to the city.
So I completely agree on the nonprofits. I assume you mean like all nonprofits that we work with, right?
Yeah, we've, there's actually been a fair amount of work in the city around the capacity of nonprofits and what they're doing. I think we can be a lot better if we're more effective and efficient in how we work with them and how they work with each other, frankly.
Okay. But as to this audit piece, you're just accepting the audit and then asking the city manager to look at the recommendations. That's it as to this audit and as to downtown street teams and Roberts Family Community Centers?
Correct. And then Steve's friendly amendment of agendizing Roberts, the issue that we put aside for quite a while around the building itself.
Yeah, so my question around, so is that in your motion or is that out of your motion?
It's part of the direction for the city manager to agendize that. We didn't put a date on it. It's not a motion to fund or not fund at this point, but to put it on the council's agenda.
Okay, thank you, Jay. So here's, you know, kind of where I'm at. It's really true, the things that Rick and others have said about the Roberts family, they stand in a gap in a unique way, especially, I think, in District Two, and they have a unique relationship out there. I know some of their current and former employees really well. I went to school with some of them. And I think it's important work. That being said, our job is in large part fiscal responsibility for the city's dollars, and they're limited. They're so, so limited. And there are so many nonprofits that we want to help. And Jeff is right. We can't give them additional funding until we know that they have taken care of the things that Jorge has identified. I think it's irresponsible to put a spending item forward before we give them the opportunity to cure the problems that have been identified. They need to be able to tell us how they can pay their debt. They need to be able to show us how Sierra Health Foundation is working out for them. Kudos to them, you know, to stand up here at a council meeting with their heads held high and say, hey, we're going after this. We're going to fix it. But we have to give them the opportunity to do it. Just saying that they're prepared to do it isn't enough for us to then extend more funding yet. We need to give them the chance to show us that they have made those changes. There are nonprofits all over the city of Sacramento asking us for funding for buildings, asking us for funding for programs. We know this. We all get the calls all the time. And while I think the Roberts family does extremely important work, I will be thrilled to support them once we know they have cured these deficiencies. And then, you know, I guess my final thing here is I too am worried about a form of equity, and that is, you know, some three years ago, I fought really hard for folks that are working with homeless women and children to get funding. And one of those organizations was being audited by the county, not us. They had a perfect record with us. The county was doing an audit, and we did not give them any funding until that audit from the county came back clear. And they answered for whatever issues were still outstanding. I don't think it's fair to hold one group that's serving women and children to that standard and hold any other group that's actually being audited by us to a different standard. So I guess one of the things I would just like to direct staff, and it doesn't need to be part of the motion, it's really just a conversation piece, is what is going to be our policy? Because it's not fair to treat all these organizations differently. Jay's right. Most nonprofits, especially the smaller ones, or the ones that are growing from being small to being large, like Roberts, like that is a big challenge when you're a nonprofit. What are we doing to help them bridge that gap? Jay is right on the money, I think, with that piece, and we need to do it. But I'm not going to support a motion that is already agendizing an expenditure or asking the city manager to agendize an expenditure. I think that's premature. I understand Councilmember Hanson's timeline. I really actually think that's noble of him. He's trying to take care of something here while he's got a chance. Good on him for that. However, we owe it in fiscal responsibility to the city to have Jorge come back and tell us where they are, just as Jay has recommended, accept the audit, come back and show us how these folks are doing with their plan before we direct the city manager for an expenditure discussion. That's my position, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ashby. Before I turn, and I know Councilman Hanson had a comment, but I want to weigh in here, and we want to hear from the city manager as well. And I've talked a lot to the city manager about these issues over the course of the past several months. I'd like to try, if I might, as mayor, to see if I can reconcile some of the seemingly contradictory, but I believe actually consistent messages coming from every member of the city council on this item. And first of all, I would just say, relevant or not for me, I have known Darryl Roberts for 40 years. We were college interns together back in Washington, DC, back before either of us knew we would be in any form of public or community life. And the man I knew then is the man I know now, and of course, his wife Tina as well. These people have hearts of gold. They do the Lord's work. They are out there helping generations of kids and families in very, very profound ways. And we cannot lose the benefit of their work. We cannot. And yes, there are many great nonprofits. They've been at it a long time, and they have a demonstrated track record of success. I don't say however to that, but I do think that there are two messages here, which are not contradictory, that we do have a responsibility to oversee the public dollar. We sure do. And those we grant the money to have a responsibility to act as fiduciaries for the public and the communities that they serve to make sure that the money is spent appropriately. And the audit here obviously raises some questions. I would, you know, put it all under the category of, in the way Jay described it, in the way others described it, an organization that does incredible work in the community, but its strongest suit is not the fiscal management of their nonprofits. So what do we do about that? I understand the impulse to say, well, let's not give them any more money until we're clear that they have fixed their books. But I think there's a better option here. And I think in the long run, it actually saves the organization and other nonprofits, if they follow suit, a lot more money with a lot less heartache. And that is to focus on Richard Dana's testimony earlier and the role of the Sierra Health Foundation. We need, in this instance, an intermediary organization that has more capacity to be not just a loose partner with the Roberts Family Development Center, but to actually be the fiduciary, to actually be the fiscal agent, fiscal sponsor, so that Howard Chan, in his role as city manager, and he'll speak for himself in a moment, can comfortably say, yes, we are helping Roberts, but rather than have to worry about the same compliance issues over and over again, we actually hold Sierra responsible. And then it's their relationship with Roberts where the money gets transparently funneled to meet the public and community objective, which is to serve the families and to serve the kids. I think we expect, even with these changes that RFDC has made, I'd rather them, just as me, spend less money and attention on that and go do what they do so well, and have Sierra with the appropriate fee structure, because Sierra has to meet its expenses too, handle everything else, and to know that the manager and the council are actually contracting from a fiscal responsibility perspective with Sierra, not with RFDC. And I actually think it's a model that can work with other struggling nonprofits, because a lot of the nonprofits need that intermediary organization that has the capacity that they do not have. Now, when it comes to Councilmember Hanson's laudable motion on the issue of the remaining work on the structure, and I've been out there, and I do think, if we can, and I'm going to caveat it, that we should find a way to contribute so that that project can be finished. But two caveats. Number one, I do think that it should go through Sierra Health Foundation, so that we're not having to wait months to determine whether RFDC is or is not, you know, met every single audit standard here that Jorge and his team appropriately pointed out. But the second thing, and this is to my friends at RFDC, Darryl and Tina, I think before we write a check, we need to know exactly and validate how much money is actually needed to fund the project, because that's part of the problem too, sometimes, honestly, is that, you know, what is actually needed is sometimes just less than precise. And, you know, I know I've made calls, other members have made calls, you've gotten a lot of in-kind contribution from the building trades and others, all wonderful, but the city, Angelique is right here too. You know, number one, we don't even know if we have general fund money. Remember, Howard and the team and the city council, we would like to let some of the CARES money to Roberts for some of the programming that was held up because of the audit. We cannot use CARES money for the building construction. We have to use general fund or Measure U money. Now, I'm all for it, but I also want to get that sales tax update and see if we have any money, because we also owe Rick Jennings a number of millions of dollars on the waterfront and the levies. Thank you. I haven't forgotten. We have more to pay to establish our Office of Community Response, which is a major public safety reform issue, and there were several other things on the list. I want to help fund Roberts with general fund money to finish that construction. But frankly, don't just jam it on the agenda, respectfully. You've got to know, one, do we have money? Two, is the money going to go, and how much is it precisely? And three, do we really have an ironclad deal with the Sierra Health Foundation about handling the money? We got all that. Boom, I say a couple hundred grand if we find it. Let's get it to D and T, and let's get the darn project done, because it's great for the family. Um, because it's great for the family, great for the kids, but let's take those steps. And, you know, let's do it right. That's my humble opinion. Uh, Steve, did you have another comment, or I turned it over to Howard and then maybe?
Yeah, uh, I'll just be real quick right before Howard. Thanks, Mayor. Uh, one, fiscal intermediaries, um, fiscal agents for nonprofits, it's a very common thing for a lot of different reasons. Um, so that's not new. In my um request for friendly amendment, it was to use the Sierra Health structure that the city manager recommended and vetted already, um, because I believe that has allowed um, funding to pass already to RFDC, consistent with some of the other programs. It was one of your letters, uh budget memos, Mayor, that assigned uh uh budget allocation from Measure U, and that I defer to Councilmember Warren, but I believe it was one of his requests that we help him with the building. And um I believe that money is probably still being held. Howard can answer that. But we we set an expectation, whether we call it a promise or an expectation, and um we've put RFDC and Downtown Streets team through a very rigorous process here. They've responded, they've already adapted and implemented many changes, and I'm very proud to see how robust that is. Um, a- and the real comment I wanted to make is that when our Parks Department had overtime violations, we didn't stop funding the Parks Department, we changed it so it worked better. When our fire department or police department have um challenges raised fiscally by our audits, we implement changes. We don't stop funding them. And, you know, through all this conversation about Measure U and equity, and um even the ballot measure situation surrounding us, our commitment to the most vulnerable is still one of the things that people are most in doubt about. Now, core services have to be maintained, but the 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 obligations we've made, whether firm or not, and whether the money's been released or not, those are all different things, but we set an expectation that we're gonna help. And I hope that it's not a premeditated failure, because, you know, we've certainly put Tina and Daryl and his organization and Downtown Streets name team through the grinder. And to some extent, um, we need to let them find their their way through some reconciliation and through um the hard work they've done to to implement changes um back into um serving the community and focusing on that. So I I just think it's important we not be hypocritical about how we conduct our business and single out any one entity in this process.
I I don't think, I I'm just gonna say, I'm sorry, nobody's being singled out here. I'll defend the Roberts to the very end. I love them. I want the money to go that way, but man, part of it's their responsibility, and they know it. So don't.
I I'm not denying that. I'm not denying that, but sometimes we we want to have it both ways.
And nobody's holding back money, by the way. What happened was Measure U collapsed, as we know, once COVID hit. So the minute we find that money, we gotta do right by Rick Jennings again, and some of the other promises that we made. I'm for, I'm for, I'm for finishing that project with the Roberts. Um, but we've gotta there's no plot here. This is all, we all wanna do the good and the right thing. City Manager Chan?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Mayor and Councilmember Hanson. Uh, and Councilmember Hanson, you're right, we have been funding RFDC through CARES Act money via Sierra Health, so that relationship exists. Here here's the good news, that I've been in preliminary discussions with Sierra Health Foundation, ready to do exactly what the mayor and I have been talking about for some time now. And that is, if we have our agreement with Sierra Health to deliver, whether it's Freedom Schools or to finish out this capital project, uh, and they sub, if you will, with uh RFDC to have those programs move forward and have the construction project completed. Uh, all of my concerns relative to these audits are addressed. We could come back and look at this six months from now, which is typical for uh Jorge to do. And if those things that have been put in place today uh continue to to be successful, then we could have a conversation about removing that intermediary. But a- at this point, that's probably going to be the the best course of action moving forward, and I I fully support it, and I will um work with Sierra Health to make that happen, if that's the will of the council.
Okay.
Mayor, one brief comment?
Yes, by the way.
So I I I support that course of action, but that, of course, means that Sierra Health then should be under the auspice of our city auditor to just make sure that if they're the fiscal agent, that all of this is above board and appropriate, but more or less, but transparent, auditable. That's the way every fiscal organization should be.
I think that's right. So just to be clear with Councilmember Hanson and his request, even if it's not part of the motion, I will work, um, uh, it it's not part of the motion, because I think you want Jeff Harris and Angelique Ashby's uh unanimous vote on this, but I will tell you that my intent, and remember, the mayor under the current charter can set, uh, put an item on the agenda, but I do so always in consultation with the city manager. We will work together to to, one, specify the amount of general fund or Measure U money needed to finish the construction project, and really talk about auditing, we will fine chisel that and fine tune that. And then we have to identify whether or not we've got the money, either because of more optimistic sales tax numbers, or whenever we get that indication, because again, there are other promises that we have made as well, that are waiting for that for that financial evaluation as well. And then, if I'm confident, if your manager's confident that we can go forward to help fill that gap, then I'm for it, and we'll put it on the agenda. But I just wanna go through those steps expeditiously before we make that recommendation.
You know, and and one last thing I'll say is, uh, this is to Councilmember Sheneer's comment. Uh, yes, we need to do a better job of managing our grants citywide, and it's something that we have uh been working on uh long before these audits ever came to light here. And in fact, it was early in twenty nineteen that we were working through coordinating all of our departments that issue grants, and uh we were managing them with desperate uh disparate systems, and and so we've let out an RP for an IT solution to do just that. Uh, we have a working team, interdepartmental working team, to gauge what level of requirements uh w- will be uh uh put upon those grantees depending on dollar values. And and all this we'll bring back along with how we uh can expand the technical assistance to nonprofits uh when we come back. But I I thought it's important to note that this is something that we are aware of, we've been working on, and we're pretty far down the road. So more to come in the report back.
So, if I can, Mayor, quickly. One is, I don't think there's anything inconsistent about the motion and direction. As I said, I I didn't put a date on when this should come back. I do think it deserves a um a discussion. I know that there were other projects that got caught up in Measure U. I'm sure they're on the phone already calling some of us. Um, so I I do think we need to have the discussion, and.
If you have my commitment to have the discussion, if you can remove it from your motion, I think we'll have unanimity. If it stays in the motion, I'm worried that.
All right, I I I'll remove it, and if Mr. Warren is okay with that. The other thing, I just a comment to the city manager. Um, I I appreciate the work that's going on, um, would love to get an update on it. I also wanna make sure that from the nonprofit side, um, there are a lot of sophisticated nonprofits in the city who can, who should be involved in that conversation of how we do that. I don't know that the folks who work for the city have the understanding at all times. You know, we always want those impacted most to be part of the conversation, so I I'd ask that you make sure that that happens as well in in that work that you're doing, which I I think is great.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think uh th- there are several people in the community that I've met with uh in in that regard. So yes, absolutely.
A- and there's different models of doing it, so. I think that the models we use for small business, we did very expeditiously. There's o- other ways that we can do it, and and I'd love to be part of that discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so I I'll I'll amend the motion if Mr. Warren is okay as the second.
Yeah, I I have a a question or two. One is, uh, the the timing of the evaluation uh from Sierra Health or what you need from Sierra Health. Um, it was suggested that somehow we need to, you know, either understand the arrangement and and subject them to some type of either audit or um examination prior to. So is i- 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 is that correct, or am I incorrect?
I I think that uh it will be a very short timeline, because we do have a model in place working directly with Sierra Health. Uh, it is uh just making sure that the relationship between RFDC and Sierra Health reflect um the the current arrangement they have with, I think it was with pop-ups and some other um programs they were delivering under the auspices of uh Sierra Health. That being the case, I I, all my concerns are 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 addressed.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will uh, uh, I'll second the the new motion.
So let me, I I wanna clarify, because I I, Councilmember Hanson and I are um having a little bit of a text exchange about the solidity of of my commitment to agendize the question of funding, the um helping provide some funding to close the gap so that they can finish their construction prob- uh, um, project. First of all, conceptually, from heart and head, I am all in favor of it. I wanna do this. Absolutely, we find a way, and we always find a way. But in fairness, we have to do two things, three things. Number one is that very short-term thing that Howard described a moment ago about solidifying the understanding with Sierra Health Foundation, that's one. Number two, working with RFDC and the Sierra Health Foundation to understand the exact amount that they need, because it it, they they D and T are very good at getting a lot of, they they get a lot of in-kind support. They're good at it, and there's and and so I wanna know exactly what amount of money the city needs to put in to help finish it. And third, we just have to, we can't write a check for anything under Measure U that isn't, that wasn't CARES eligible, by the way, because we took care of a lot of stuff through CARES, without actually identifying that we have money. And so I just wanna do that. And remember, I'm the guy that likes to invest money in the community here. Um, I I'm the one who has has raised the inclusive economic development agenda here as the mayor of this city. So I'm for it, but we also have to have, just have to identify that we actually have the money. And so those three things, I would anticipate that we can do all of that within a couple of weeks. Why not? Why not? I'm not talking about delaying this uh to delay it. I just wanna make sure that we that that we do it in in the right way. So that, I hope that's clarity, but that's the best I can do.
Mayor, I'll just say one thing. Thank you for clarifying that. I think the goalpost had four wheels on it, and at least three of those wheels were removed. And, you know, I I'm comfortable with your clarification um and your commitment to move forward.
Okay, thank you. The wheels are gonna get put back on many buses here. Um.
Just don't put them on the goalposts, that's all.
Or, yeah, whatever, goalpost buses, whatever it is, we're gonna, we're gonna recover and reinvest. So let's call the roll on uh on the motion, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we call roll on that motion, can we take a step back and ask Councilmember Jennings how he votes on temporarily suspending the council rules of procedure to bypass budget audit committee?
I vote yes.
Thank you. And so on the second motion approving the city auditor's contract, compliance audits, um, the motion by Councilmember Sheneer and second by Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sheneer?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. That's good work. That's unanimous from everyone, including the city auditor. Thank you very much for thorough and painstaking work on both audits. Thank you to Roberts and and the street teams. Thank you to the city council for engaging in real ways here, the city manager and your team. We all wanna do the right thing, and I think we're heading in that direction. Okay? Thank you all. Let's move on to the next item. That is, um, that is item thirty, which is the uh whole person care pilot, the only city other than the city and county of San Francisco that got this funding. Turn it over to Emily Halken for a report and some decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna show my screen real quick. And and this will be brief, but uh, good good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As you'll recall, on in early September, we had our first conversation about the future of the Pathways to Health and Home Program, our implementation of the state's whole person care pilot. Um, at that time, council provided uh policy direction to staff, and today is an interim step to get a more formal vote to allow us then to move forward with budgetary and contractual um items that will need to come before you in the coming months. And so today, what I'm have in front of you is a framework for funding plan for the Pathways program that will allow us to simultaneously develop service contracts for this January, so there's no break in service for the program, but also to begin negotiation of external contributions, should the state receive um an extension of the waiver as they have requested. And so as a reminder, on September eighth, we discussed three scenarios related to the whole person care pilot. One of them we have dismissed, which was to opt out of the program at the end of December. And as you will recall, um, the program is set to s- to end this December, um, but is being considered for a one-year extension request by the state. At this point, the state of California has submitted their formal request to the federal Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, and the CMS has deemed that their application is complete. However, we have no expectation that we will receive any notification of movement on this extension until early next year, possibly as late as February or March. Given this, in September, the council directed staff to pursue this state extension, but also to create a locally funded backstop to allow for ramp down during twenty twenty-one, should the federal funding not be available. So today I have that framework for your review for both of the scenarios, and as I said, I expect to be back in December to seek budgetary approval and contract contractual approval to allow extension of service contracts. The two, um, after the the meeting in September, staff worked to start the work on costing out estimates that will meet the council's direction. And the two scenarios, in both cases, the two scenarios would both allow the Pathways program to continue in some semblance um for twelve months, really intending to bridge the time between when the current uh waiver ends and when Cal AIM, which is the state's new implementation of a of a similar type of program, is is expected to start in January of twenty twenty-two. Should the waiver extension be granted by the federal government, the city would pursue a similar approach to funding as the current program is funded, uh partnering up and with our local healthcare systems and augmenting that funding with funds from the homeless services division, as has been done since its inception. The second scenario, again, assumes twelve-month timeline, but is entirely locally funded, using funds from the whole person care bonus augmentation funding that the mayor has helped to secure, plus some proceeds from what will be our final uh transit uh financial transaction with the federally funded portion of the program. Since September, since the September direction from council, we have met with our Pathways partners on this approach and shared the input from council. The partners who are inclusive of our service providers, all four health systems and all five managed care program partners, all strongly supported a twelve-month local ramp down, should the extension not be granted. Um, there's more complete input from the partners in Attachment Three to your staff report, but this slide shows the general input that we got from them, which really is focused in on ensuring contin- continuity of care for the clients, ensuring that there's very clear timelines and access to transition services for our clients, and really focusing the last year on access to stable housing for many of our clients who remain homeless. We took these comments then to our executive committee um last week, and they concurred with those recommendations from our partners and directed staff to bring this to council today for final approval. Um, what's important to note is that regardless of the funding framework, we're sort of living between two options as we speak, the program is committed to continuing operations through the end of twenty twenty-one and not beginning to transition our clients off of services until we have a fully developed transition plan. The funding framework, which is also included as Attachment Two to your staff report, has two scenarios. Um, given the likely delay and knowing anything about the federal waiver extension, staff recommends bringing budget actions and contracts in December, using the locally funded option. Simultaneously, we will begin to negotiate with our external funding partners around extension of their existing funding commitments, should we get the extension from the federal government. And we will also work to identify ways to fill any additional funding gaps um in a in a extended program. We have been told by the state that if a federal extension is granted, even if it's delayed by a couple of months, that it would be a retroactive approval, meaning that any funds that we put out from January first until the time of the extension is granted, the city can recoup. the city can recoup. So pending council's approval today of these funding approaches, um, staff will begin immediately working on extending service contracts through the first quarter of 2021, which is when we hope to have approval of the federal government of, of the extension. Uh, these contracts and the budget actions, uh, related to the local five million dollar, uh, Whole Person Care augmentation will come to council in December. Simultaneously, we'll begin working on securing funding in the case that we get the federal extension, so that all those pla, pieces are in place once we get the go-ahead from the federal government. Regardless of the funding approach, staff and the Pathways team will continue our work on a full transition plan for clients, um, at the end of 2021, with the goal of continuity of care, housing stability, and ensuring they all have access to healthcare as priorities. And as we learn more about the waiver extension, we'll also be back with many more actions related to extension of our funding agreement with the state. This ends my presentation, I'm happy to take any questions.
Do we have public te, thank you, Emily, Ms. Halken, do we have, uh, public testimony on this very important item?
I have no callers on this item.
Mayor, make a motion in support, uh, to move the item.
So you're, you're moving, and, and just to clarify, the motion is for, uh, option number one, correct, that we want to extend this for a full year, scenario one?
Yes, yes. That is the motion.
Okay.
Great job, Emily.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second, Mayor, this is Larry Carr.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Carr, I just want to say, if I don't see hands, that I want to thank Emily for her stewardship of this really important project. As you know, this one maybe sometimes gets a little lost in the shuffle, but remember, this was one of our first, uh, initiatives back in 2017, when, um, our county chose not to apply, and we chose to apply, and it has resulted now in tens of millions of dollars, uh, coming to the city, and more than that for Combat Homeless, but more significantly, these impressive numbers, you know, over two thousand total enrollments, nine hundred twelve people currently, uh, enrolled in, in Pathways, five hundred and three people permanently housed, three hundred and fifty-four transitionally housed, almost a thousand people, and, uh, these are really vulnerable people, and the fact that we now get to continue this and coordinate it with some of our other initiatives, I think is really important. So Emily, just want to say thank you, I haven't forgotten, uh, why this is one of our signature, uh, homeless initiatives here in Sacramento. Let's, let's, let's call the roll.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Okay, that concludes the afternoon's agenda, it's a special meeting, so we don't have public testimony on items not on the agenda, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
Okay, what about council ideas and questions, do we wait for the evening?
Yes.
Yes, we wait for the evening meeting, that's what we will do, I know I have something, but I, I can wait for the evening. Um, we do have a closed session, at what time, Madam Clerk?
So our next meeting is at three o'clock, it's the Personnel and Public Employees Committee, we have closed session that will start at three thirty, or as soon as the P and P E meeting is completed, and then we have a regular meeting at five PM.
Okay, so, um...
Can I ask, Mindy, uh, can someone send us a text or an email for those of us not on PP and E, so we know when to hook back in?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
That's okay, um, or do we recess or adjourn?
We adjourn.
I knew that, okay. We, um, are adjourned until, uh, five o'clock for a public session, thank you so much, everybody.